Dr. Turner, I just have an introductory comment to make. As you know, we're here today to hear a presentation from South Piedmont Community College as it relates to a bond referendum they would like to talk to us about today. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Jeremy McGee, the interim president.
We certainly appreciate the opportunity to come and visit with you today and talk about your future plans of our institution. As you know, I've been in this county a long time and been involved in education. It certainly is a pleasure to do business in the county where its leadership values education so deeply. It's been very apparent for 23 years I've been here and we're deeply grateful. We're certainly grateful for your continued support of the work at South Piedmont Community College over the years. Since I've been involved in higher education now more than 40 years, I hate to admit, but I've seen, I think, the best and the worst that education has to offer. And I want to assure you that the four months that I've been associated with South Piedmont Community College, I've been deeply impressed with the professionalism that I see every day. I've never been associated with any institution which has given more emphasis to operating efficiently and to be a good steward of its resources. We have with us today our senior leadership team and many of our trustees, and we appreciate them coming to join us. As most of you know, my predecessor, Dr. Stan Sador, presented a lot of detail to you at a January presentation. And I'm not here to repeat his presentation at all, but to concentrate my comments on the needs of our institution and discuss with you one major revision in the January presentation. I'd like to present our facility needs to you with a brief explanation for each one, talk about the projected cost of each project, and the desired timetable for completion of each project, and then, of course, give you all the time you need to ask questions or maybe give us feedback on the conclusion. We do have a PowerPoint, and we're using it as a bit of a guide today. Give the proposal overview. To meet the educational and workforce development needs of growing Union County, we're requesting $39.9 million bond referendum to be placed in November 2016. Now, the utilization of these funds would be as follows. The STEM building, we've been talking about for quite some time, which would be approximately $19.7 million. The completion of the Center for Technology, which would be $4.8 million. Then we'd renovate Building A, which is the original building on our old Charlotte campus, and to also renovate Building B. And the fifth thing is the thing where our change is from the January presentation. We've talked about adding another building on the Old Charlotte Highway campus. And we feel like, experience I've had in higher ed, the studies that I've presented to you over the years, shows me that students will drive about 15 minutes from their home to replace the business to take classes. Well, the Old Charlotte Highway is not within 15 minutes of a large segment of population of our county. So our proposal is that this other classroom building be built somewhere in the Waxaw-Marvin area, and that we would have active programs offered there. And we also would, we'd have to have a library there to serve our institution. And we've been aware that for some time, the county's been trying to figure out how to have a library for the citizens in that region. So we would also turn our library into a lending library to that part of the county so that people there will have access to the library. If you ask what's justification why you need the new facilities, well, the reasons are pretty obvious, and one I'll spend a little bit of time explaining. I just want to maintain quality of service to our students, and we want to fulfill our mission of providing education opportunities for every citizen of Union County, not just selected citizens. And the major thing is, we have to ensure that our accreditation does not become jeopardized. This will show you that we have about 28 square feet available for every full-time equivalent student on our campus. But it's recommended that you have 100 square feet per FTE. And then, our friends out of Brunswick County, they've got a lot of money, and they tax our beach property so highly down there, they can afford to have real nice stuff down there to have 100 square feet per FTE. But we have to move off this 28 square feet per student. And we were told when our accreditation team came to visit us last, like in 2013, that we were told directly, we were cited, that we just didn't have enough educational space for our students, and we had to provide more. And they let us by, and we moved on, our accreditation was fine. But they're coming back in 2018, and we would like to be able to show them at least some progress on adding more, add additional classroom space for our students. And so, that's a certainly driving force between our question and how our question today. I'd like to talk about each one of the facilities that we're concerned with. The STEM classroom building, of course, we all know that, we've all been told over and over and over that science, technology, engineering, and math is the future. We're going to compete for high-paying jobs and high-skill jobs, and we have to provide more highly-trained people in those areas. And so that will be the emphasis of the new classroom building we would like to build. This building will be substantially larger than most of the buildings that we're involved with. It's 75,000 square feet and three stories. And we, like you, are concerned by access on and off Old Charlotte Highway, it gets awfully busy there. So we're talking about bringing another entrance off of Rogers Road. So the access to this facility would be off of Old Charlotte Highway, secondarily, the primary would be off of Rogers Road. It would be behind the parking lot and behind Building D that we currently have there. But we anticipate having biology, microbiology, biotechnology labs, computer labs, classrooms, basic skills and development labs here, and some student activity space. This is the driving force, this is the centerpiece of our presentation today and our greatest need. We'd also like to pay some more attention to our Center for Technology. Last time presentation was made to you, there's a need presented of almost $7 million, and we've reduced that some because we had, we could use some of our bond funds that we have obligated to us to reduce that cost a bit. But, as you know, we purchased this building in 2013, and it provides 12,000 square feet of classroom for us. And primarily, it's for advanced manufacturing, industrial maintenance, and construction technologies. But there's an exciting potential in that building. In the rear of that building, there's a big loading dock, and it has very high ceilings. And we can go in there and put two levels of classrooms, which would add dramatically to our available classroom space. We actually could get up to 75,000 usable square feet in that building. And obviously, if you're buying a new building these days, it's around $200 a square foot. So we could get this additional square footage by going in the structure we have, and it'd be at about $70 a square foot, and get us up to 75,000 square feet there. Obviously, we're looking everywhere for teaching space. And the building we're talking about in Western Union County is a dual-purpose building, which would meet our needs, giving us an enhanced presence in Western Union County. We feel like there's potential there to have between 300 and 500 students attending curriculum classes on that campus once it gets up and running. But again, we probably have a 7,000 square foot library as part of our operation there so that we could pay for the advanced additional hours on weekends and evenings for the local community to come in and use that facility as a lending library. We'd also have a community room there as part of the library, and so, just a few fact and staff offices, but that might be. And then renovations to Building A. And none of these renovation projects from ARV could be done until we build a STEM building because we have to have somewhere to put our picture while we're doing the renovations that we feel like we need to make. This building was built in 1981 as a bank operations center, and we're so grateful to have it, and we made it work. But it's, we have a very nice conference instruction center there, which is used at least once a day and sometimes twice a day, I think. But the major renovation would give us a lot more classrooms and bring us up to the standards for accessibility and energy. And the Union County Early College program continues to grow. Our program has now grown from 300 students to 400 students, and we house all of them in this facility. And I have on my desk today a request from the principal of the Early College saying, "We have to have more space, what can you do for us?" And our answer is, "Just hang on, we don't have any more space coming out, we'll work with as best we can." But we're excited about that program, we think it's doing some wonderful things with young people in our county, but we simply are out of room, we're in more room with the Early College. I think these 405 students are planned for enrollment this fall. Of course, Building B, this is another existing building, was built in 2003, it hasn't been renovated or modified since. We'd like to have space there for some new active programs that we are envisioning, and also to better serve some of our programs, such as our health-related programs. The timetable for our projects, and these, in our mind, in a perfect world, these would be the years that we would complete these projects. We'd like to have the STEM classroom building up and under construction when Saks comes back for its next visit so we can show them progress. We'd like to have that building operational by 2019. By 2020, we'd like to have the Center for Technology completely renovated and upfitted. We'd like to have the building in Western Union County done by 2019, or sort of later in 2020, and then the building 2021, 2021, 22. Again, those are the completion dates that we have in mind. And when you, in our business, like everybody else is, you're always having to look into the future as best you can and try to project the needs of the community. And when we look at the future of South Piedmont Community College, we look at it not only through our eyes, but through the eyes of the local community and the employers. And they tell us that there are significant needs for advanced manufacturing, for STEM programs, and for health-related training. And these facilities would allow us to be out front in all, every one of those areas. So we're trying to make sure that we have facilities adequate to provide the programs that we need to offer to make sure that we're serving the county in a correct way. I think you can project jobs five years, eight years. When you start getting 10 years out, you aren't projecting anymore, you're guessing because the world changes so quickly around us now, the work world. But we think this would put South Piedmont in a really competitive position for the next 10, 15 years anyway. I was not here, but I have some questions that I know were asked at the last meeting, and I thought we would try to make sure we responded to those in some sort of way. So let's say, how about a library in Waxaw? Well, maybe this would be one of the answers for our library in Waxaw, because we'd be happy if we could fulfill that need. As you can see, so many of these things are tied together. We can't do, we can't repair Building A and Building B till we get the STEM building. We can't do this till we get that. So they're so tied together that in our minds, it'd be better for us to come in at one time and do some projecting and get a $39.9 million referendum out there, nothing kind of do too. $200 per square foot, we've talked to a lot of architects, a lot of people that are building buildings right now, and that's kind of the going rate. About five years ago, you could get buildings for $140, $160 a square foot, but everybody's working now. And so, when everybody's back to work, all the pricing goes up. But most of these were from $180 to $200 per square foot, except for the STEM building, which has a lot of labs in it. When you have labs, of course, the cost comes up a little bit, but it's $235, $240 a square foot. And as moving the Early College to an area of high school with possibility, it really isn't if you're going to do Early College the way it was designed. Early College was designed to take young people with high potential, but who maybe didn't see themselves as a college student, who didn't think they had a chance to go to college, and put them in college classrooms with other college students where they can see how successful they can be, how they can compete, and create a better image, self-image, and then go on and do a little work. I was noticing, we had a car put out to Ty, who was our student on our board trustees. I'm proud to tell you that Ty is not with us anymore. Ty was named a Morehead Scholar at Carolina as a junior, and he came through our Early College program. So that's the kind of work they're doing there, which I think is pretty significant. But we feel good about having the Early College, we think it should be on the college campus, and we're delighted to have them, but it does take a lot of space. Those are the things we wanted to present, and we're happy to listen to your suggestions unless you ask us questions. And I've got the staff here, and we'll try to respond as best we can to your concerns.
Do we have any questions from the county commissioner?
Dr. McGee, if you were to be able to build these facilities, what would that do to your square footage per FTE?
It would get it up to about 60, between 60 and 65, and that would be showing dramatic progress, and I'm sure our accreditation team will be very happy about it.
Is your current calculation for the 28-foot included into Early College students?
Yes.
What's your timeline on the STEM building?
Well, we'd like to be in it.
Breaking ground, best-case scenario.
Well, we'd like to be in it by, I think their date was 2018, 2019. We'd like to get started on the construction in 2017 and 2018. It's going to take probably 18 months to build that building, I would think. But we want very much that when our accreditation team comes for our midterm review, they'll show them that we're serious about adding some space, and we think certainly that would do that.
Does that amount, include all the equipment, so it's fully furnished?
I'm assuming those numbers, I think so.
Yes, yes, it does include furniture and equipment. And can I speak just a minute to the construction? Union County gave us $1 million several years ago for planning of that building, so we've already done a good bit of the legwork as far as our plans, which will let us start that building a good bit faster than if we were starting purely from scratch.
Just one other quick question. With the STEM building, that's obviously the priority, correct?
Yes.
Would it hurt your timeline if the bond was broken up into two parts, one in 16 and one in 18, so that you complete the STEM building and then move in? And then, the second part of my question is, do you have land identified or acquired for Western Union County?
Well, the second part, let me ask that part first. We think we could get a contribution of land, and if not, our South Piedmont Foundation will find funding about that. And the other question was?
Yep, the question was? Would the, would it hurt your timeline, because the STEM has to be completed ahead of time, to have a bond in 16 and 18, which I think was the original proposal back in February?
Yeah, we would rather do it all together because, again, the projects are so tied together. But the minute we finish the STEM building, we're going to move people out of Building A so we can go in it. Because we're talking about completely tearing out interior walls and pushing out and building more classrooms. And then, we, soon as we finish that, we're going to speak Building B into the STEM building. So if the STEM building was being utilized, we'd be using part of it in this other, these other projects. So it would really help us if we could explain it all at one time, but I know that that might not be possible. But in a perfect world, we prefer, you know, whatever. And, you know, if we're fortunate enough to be able to have a referendum, we have a little work to do to get those fast, and we do it twice, and again, take on, I mean, we'd have to tie our staff up with that for another, for another problem.
Well, my only concern, and we had this discussion, is I think you leave at the end of the year.
Correct.
And the Western piece was not discussed back in February, and your predecessor was, that was never brought up. So my only concern would be, whoever replaces you, are they going to have the same vision? And I know the board is, you guys are working to try and make sure they do, but if somebody has a different vision, where do we go from here?
Yeah, thank you, that's a great question, and certainly one we need to address. I will be leaving, but none of the trustees will be. So the trustees will drive the future planning of the school. So I can't speak for the trustees, but I think I know they want us to know that, that once they make this decision, that a new president coming in will not alter their decision. So it's, and I've got to tell you, with my past experience, you know, we had an idea many years ago of putting a little place for people to get master's degrees over in Matthews area. And some people thought we were crazy, and we kicked it around for a few years, and we had eight students, and we had 18 students. Today, there's 500 students over there getting doctoral degrees and master's degrees. And we think the same kind of thing will happen. It will become such a driver of revenue and FTE, it'll be just way too important for the new president to walk away from.
May I ask Michelle a question? How old are these estimates, and did you all put in an escalation as to when these might hit the market and when you might hit the market from a construction perspective?
These plans were developed in November of 2013, and we have been talking to our architect about construction costs and what they have noticed since then. They have risen some, but we feel like that we can do the projects that we need to do with the funds that are allotted to us. What we've heard from you all, year after year after year, is what good stewards we are of the money that we are allocated, so we would do the same with these funds. We would do what we can within our means.
Can I add something to Lance's question about a new president? Well, I thought we were very fortunate to have Dr. McGee, I mean, really. But him to come in at a time like this is really good. And we have a committee, but we also have a search group going out for us. And we, most of us have sent in some information, requesting, they did request what we wanted in the president. And you can rest assured that we would definitely follow through with that.
I think, just to piggyback on John's comments, one of the things that we see at the chamber, obviously, our population in the western part of the county has grown tremendously. And what we have seen at the chamber is the reliance that business has on South Piedmont. We believe, as Dr. McGee said earlier, there is a great opportunity for us as a county to capture students that are now making their way to Mecklenburg and bring those back here to Union County for their education, which is, again, ties right back into businesses' needs. So I think that this board, again, in our discussions, is very committed that this project makes a lot of sense, not only for today, but for the future, for the college as well as our county.
Yeah, we wouldn't get upset at all if we put this facility down in the Waxaw area if some people from Mecklenburg County came over to take classes. That'd be okay with us.
Well, you know, we would fully support that in the chamber, Dr. McGee.
A quick question for Jeff. Jeff, an idea of maybe how much a bond like this size would cost? Do you have those numbers?
A bond for all of the 39,900? If you smooth the rate out a little bit, it's right around a penny and a quarter.
A penny and a quarter on the tax rate, pre-made?
Three, yeah, right around three.
As you know, we're facing challenges. We're going to be speaking to the Union County Public Schools after this meeting. There's some concerns, you know, maybe cross, you know, we talked about doing things in conjunction with one another and trying to make sure that we didn't duplicate efforts. They're going to be asking us, I think, for $102 million for a project right down the road from your building. The STEM building, definitely, that's the key, that's the first thing to get, to work on. Is there some opportunities there for, again, for Union County Public Schools, not just in Early College, maybe there's some other opportunities there for those students interested in pursuing careers that are going to be working on that school?
We'd love to have any kind of association we can have with Union County Public Schools because, you know, those are the students and parents we're trying to serve. If we can get them out to take classes, we're always happy to do that. Anytime we aren't using that building, we have it for the communities.
The bonds, you know, just that we pass them, that would still be ongoing projects until, we're looking at, I think I saw some dates on here, after 2022.
2022.
Okay, so it's not all at once.
Right.
Wouldn't be something that had to come all at one time.
And we would obviously jot your timetable to work with as the funds came in. That's just the order we would try to give them in.
You know, one thing I appreciate about the community colleges and being involved in different businesses, being able to take classes at community college, whether it was computer classes or whatever. My dad took HVAC classes with South Piedmont. I have family members that have been in nursing and those kind of programs. So, you know, what you serve, just like you said, trying to predict that 10 years, we don't know what business will be here and won't, won't. But the one thing about the community college is it's adaptable and can handle that. So I appreciate all that you do for the community, and it's a great service for us and for the adults as well as the community. Appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, another question for Jeff. You said 1.3 cents?
Probably 1.25.
Okay, 1.25. But could you spread the issuance of these bonds out so initially that wouldn't be the target since you're going to be going to 2022?
Well, there's a strange quirk in the statute that the LGC doesn't want you to go out seven years past the bond election, but they also require you to have the money in hand before you let the contracts. So when we looked at it and did the cost estimates, what we did is we spread it and then leveled over the rates, so we built up some reserves so we can get the rate down as far as possible. So to meet kind of their construction timeline, and that, I'm assuming you let contracts probably in that 2017, that 2019 timeframe, if you want to finish by 2022, you'd have to take that rate, that one and a quarter rate in 2018 to build up a little bit of cash reserve so you don't have to go to a penny and a half or higher to cover the first couple of years of the peak debt service. And we'll talk about this later tonight in our agenda, but we smoothed the rate down to get it as far as possible, the lowest rate possible versus pushing the cash flow out. So to allow them to be able to get their construction contracts and everything, what we would need to do is get the rate early and then build some cash reserve, and then over time, spin that down. So I don't think it'll change the funding schedule from our side, and in addition, they'll have to, I assume it's not going to be the same periodic standard as we do. So you would have, they'd have to have the cash in hand, or at least the commitment of the cash, to be able to let those contracts.
Has there been a prior bond for SBCC? And if so, when was the last one?
Not the years I was here.
I know we have some.
We do have a bond outstanding. We are currently paying on a bond for SBCC. I'm sorry, I don't have the information. He chose the one book I didn't bring with me. But we do, it's, there's several million dollars we're still paying, or have outstanding for SBCC building.
So safe to say that's aged?
Yes.
It hasn't been in the six years I've been here, it was prior to that, but I don't have an exact timeline.
The original request that Dr. Sador came with was also for around $40 million.
It was the one I, it was '45 or '46.
And that did not include the addition of the class base?
No, we took one building away from the request for Old Charlotte Highway and moved it down.
And the, was the CTHE, was that included in the accreditation study?
Yeah, well, part of it was.
Part of it was.
The 12,000 square feet.
Okay. So basically, for $39 million, we can do all these projects, capture an opportunity in Western Union County. To the chairman's point, you know, the community colleges are very adaptable and they can change with the type of businesses that come. But I think it's also important to remember that businesses tend to follow where their workforce is at. And if we're generating top-of-the-line workforce right here in Union County, I think it will also serve to attract the type of business that we are so desperate for in this county, to be able to provide a quality of education and be able to move our students into a, as part of workforce in the county here, and support our own tax base. Having said on the board trustees also for the community college, I just have to tell you, gentlemen, that I fully support this request and hope that you will give it some serious consideration and take it under advisement. I really think this gives our county an opportunity to do something that, and for us to be a part of. part of doing something in this county that has been long underserved, and that's our community college. I think, you know, we can look around at CPCC and see the, the work that they've done and, and what they're generating, and I think we have an opportunity to mirror some of those effects. So I, I sincerely hope that, that you will join me in supporting this bond request.
Well, it also solutions the library situation as well, and I can tell you, as long as I've been in politics, I've been hit with that a lot of times, but it does.
At least three times a year.
And for an extent, I used to work in Weddington, and we were talking about it then, and that was 2000, no, before 2000. So it's been a topic of conversation for a very long time.
Solves multiple problems.
Well, that's actually one concern that I have. Have you had conversations with the library on where it would be and whether 7,000 square feet would, would help them? I think Waxaw has 5,000 now, and they're woefully short of space.
Right.
I don't know that 7,000 would solve that problem for them.
Thank you. The reason we use 7,000 is that we look at the library we have serving our students now, that's just 7,000 square feet. And you know, it's interesting, libraries are changing. You know, it's, it's moving from the place where you go get books to the place you go get information. And so we feel like 7,000 would be enough. We certainly, we'd spend a lot of time with our friends at the local library to talk about that, but we'll, but it is adaptable, we need to be, because we're here to serve. One of the first questions I asked, and I know I've driven the staff crazy, and I'm sorry, I've asked them 10,000 questions, one of the first things I said was, why don't we have a building somewhere in Waxaw more? Because if, if our friends at Central Piedmont have taught us one thing, they have taught us to put your programs where the people are. And they've gone all around Mecklenburg County, they've flopped down campuses right in the middle of the big segment of population, and therefore they've got more students than you could possibly serve. But, so this made sense to me to put a building there, and then when they meet the library and mention itself, sure, we can incorporate the two, we can work with them to do something there. Because we have a community room too, that the community room can be smaller, the library can be larger, you know. The idea is to serve the educational needs, and while doing that, be able to source the needs. It'd be flexible enough to work, I think if we got that far along.
Well, that, that would be my question as well, is if we're going to go down that route and provide library access in Western Union County and other educational opportunities, would we, we be better served by adding a library bond to partner with it so that we get some benefits to the library and SBCC working together?
I haven't thought about that.
Well, I know there, if I remember the numbers right in a row, is 50,000 square feet, I believe the library in Indian Trail is thirty-five?
Mr. Caden?
Um, don't need anything.
You don't have those numbers right off the top of your head?
I've got a master plan, probably pull it out of that. I, I don't believe Indian Trail.
I thought Indian Trail was closer to 15,000 square feet, yeah, which at this point, we're having, as you know, significant growth rates.
That's our busiest library.
Yes, it is.
A lot of most of my budget is Marshall, that's one obvious. How much is Marshall?
It's very small.
Marshall's probably in that 7,500 square foot range. Waxaw is probably, I think, Cindy and I talked about, in 2,000 square foot, maybe close range.
But we would love to have the opportunity to work with them.
Any other questions from any commissioner?
If I may answer Commissioner, Mrs. Question, the last debt was 2006. It will mature in 2025, and there's 2.38 million extending, outstanding on their existing debt.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything any of you would like to tell us, and anything you, had you get on with money in a long time?
It was probably strange.
Just quieting is big?
We tried putting up a topic. But having had the opportunity to serve in the public school system, and now as a trustee at South Piedmont, I've been fortunate to see the growth of the public school system, particularly in the western part of our county, and all the needs that go, facility needs that go along with that. And it, it makes all the sense in the world to have a presence in the western part of our county, because students just grow up 16, where they could stay with us. So it's an opportunity for South Piedmont to further establish itself as a leader, educational leader, not just in Union County, but in our region. And the commissioners have been supportive of the community college and the public school system in the past. And I would encourage you to give serious consideration to allowing that bond referendum to go forward. We have excellent staff that's going to make sure those projects go, go come through in a timely manner, and would be very good stores of taxpayers' dollars, as they have, have been in the past. I, as a trustee and a citizen, very strongly support moving this bond referendum forward. And I hope you will give very, very serious consideration to that.
And again, from a business perspective, I'll say, the number-one need that we hear from businesses, whether it's a small business person who runs up an auto tech shop to our manufacturers, the number-one concern they have is workforce development, being able to find qualified workers. And we, we have an opportunity. South Piedmont does adapt, you're quite right, Stoney. When business says we need training, they reach out to the staff and they provide the training customized to business, and there's so much value in that. And when we sit, Cindy and Frank and I are on Economic Development Board, when we sit there, we hear them talk about the value. In fact, not long ago, we had a conversation about what would business like, and the people who were sitting there, given a list of projects, South Piedmont not being on that list, they said South Piedmont. So I'll tell you, our business, our businesses see the value not only today, but they do see the value of the future. And I wholeheartedly agree with you, Jerry. Having this presence in Waxaw is very important.
Being a business owner, or operation of a business here in Union County, the flexibility is so important to our business. We, we haven't been able to challenge them very quickly, and they were able to turn programs over to us that we, we needed for, for training of our forces. I think it's something that y'all have been committed in the past, and I think that this is a need that Union County needs, and I appreciate anything that you've done in the past, and hopefully you'll speak favorably this time.
I know that, you know, coming through the work, you know, my work history, I took drug education, you know, drug awareness classes for truck drivers. I had to supervise truck drivers in one position. I've taken computer classes, and this was a lot at Richmond, but even with SBCC, I've taken noteworthy classes. So what is offered for our business and what is offered in other capacities, just the community college system, has been very important. And there's been some monies available for community college that we haven't had in the past. Of course, you mentioned the bond money that you got. We've got some, we have a new sales tax, our new tax that provides us with funding for community colleges and for education. So we spoke last year, I think, about not doing anything till 2018. I can tell you that all the county commissioners that I've spoken to are very supportive of community college. There's not one of us that doesn't support you and what you do. As you know, though, we do have challenges, and we have a 200, approximately $230 million worth of Union County Public Schools that we're only looking at. We're talking to them. So we, we do have challenges. But I want to, you know, again, I want to make you aware that all the commissioners support education in this county, and we haven't had one that has spoken out against you or, or has anything, well, wishes for you on what you're doing. So we're going to talk through it, try to figure out the best thing that we can do for, for the county, and, you know, I'm supportive of what you're trying to do. And like I said, all the other commissioners I've spoken to are supportive of South Piedmont.
We appreciate it, Stoney.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
Operationally, once these buildings are up and running, what are we looking at as an ongoing expense?
Yeah, Michelle and I, I'm looking at probably a $500,000 operation increase with the STEM building, and then maybe $200,000 on the other building. So, and we think a lot of that, we're going to generate a lot more FTE, which we've got with that. So we think, from the long haul, we can recapture.
What do you think this will do to your attendance, say, the first five years?
Yeah, we, we think that as buildings are completed, when this plan is finished, I think we have 2,600 students now every year, 2,700. We think we've got 3,500 is a reasonable number, and it could be a little higher than that. That's, that's pretty concerning. 3,400, 3,500 would be a given. There's more upside there, I think. But again, it's hard, hard to predict until we see the progress.
And if you go to 3,500, what does that do to your FTE per square foot? Does that take it back down to that?
No, it, we factored that in when we said 60, because if we had hit 67, it's a way to really increase student population, so we factored it in, it was about 58 to 60.
Still a significant increase.
Absolutely. I, I think our credit group would be very pleased with that kind of progress.
I, I'd like to agree with Commissioner Aikmas. I think this is the right thing to do. I listened to all the educational opportunities and everything you talk about, but I'm impressed with the community contribution that you do on an ongoing basis. And I use the Veterans Affairs example, and it's reaching out to the needs of our, our citizens, so we have to take that into consideration. So it's more than just education, workforce, and things like that, it's, you, you do a fantastic job of addressing the needs of the community as well.
We do appreciate this opportunity to be with you, and look forward to continuing hopefully.
We thank you very much, and we've got another meeting, so we'll get ready for that one. I have most of your adjournments. I would like to say hi.
Thank you, gentlemen.